So, welcome everyone. Thank you for coming today. I’m actually pleasantly surprised that we have this many people. This is great. Appreciate everybody coming out. And just so you know, we have some -- is that too loud? Seems a little loud. We have a few members of the Strategic Planning Coordinating Committee here. No, we -- I saw Frank somewhere.
Oh, I was just shy.
Oh, there he is. He’s over there, okay. And Ellen Bolio, who chaired the committee. We have Mike Sheldon. And is Dani here? She’s in Bitterford, probably.
I’m sorry.
So, yeah. So, we have a few folks here. And of course, Provost Hamilton. Josh is here with us. And other people who have been involved. John Tumail has been involved, and he’s here. And so, a number of people. And not to mention the various people from the working groups. And then, probably many of you have also chimed in in one capacity or another, either through your departments and colleges, or through email. So, a lot of people have contributed to this and to where we are today. And we’re gathering more input. And we’ve set the deadline for the end of the month to get feedback from colleges and departments and schools and, you know, professional staff groups and whatnot. So, we’ve already gotten some of that. And we’re getting more. And we’re also collecting the information that we get on the emails that people have been sending in as well. So, we’re taking all of that together. By way of introduction, so let me just make a couple of quick points. And then, what I’m not going to do is go through the whole strategic plan and present it to you, because that would take up all of the time. And what I want to do instead is to have a conversation. That’s why we’re here. And just open it up for questions and thoughts and comments. The -- but I would make a couple of points. First of all, this is a draft. So, this is not etched in stone. And everything is subject to further change and discussion. From the feedback we’ve gotten so far, I don’t anticipate radical changes to the strategic plan itself, meaning the six priorities. But I’m -- that’s still an open question, depending upon what additional feedback we get. So, that is the main thing. The second thing I would say is that I want to emphasize that we’re also going to be developing an implementation plan that goes parallel to the strategic plan. So, we’re very much committed to this being a living document and one that impacts, that actually has impact, that doesn’t just go on a shelf. Many of you have been in various organizations, whether it’s higher ed or other kinds of organizations, especially nonprofits. And what you often see is a strategic plan gets developed, and it’s all nice and it’s beautiful, and there’s all this input. And then, it gets printed into a glossy brochure, and then it gets stuck on a shelf, never to be looked at again until the next strategic plan is due. And then, you pull it out and you go, “Oh, did we do any of this?” And that’s not what we want to do. We want to make sure that this really does get -- serve as a blueprint for implementation. So, the way we do that is that in addition to this strategic plan, which is sort of the high-level priorities, goals, and initiatives, is that there be concrete action items tied to each of those initiatives. And those action items will live in something we’re calling an implementation plan. And that plan will be developed, and there’ll be committees around each of those priorities that track those implementation initiatives, those action steps. There will have metrics and timelines and deliverables and that sort of thing. And those will be continuously updated. So, as we achieve something, then we add more of them. As we discover that something is maybe was unrealistic, so we have to change it, or we upgrade it, or whatever. So, that’s a living document that will change. Once the strategic plan itself, the outline, the larger frame is done, then that’ll be done for a while, but those initiatives underneath will change. A lot of -- the reason I mention this is a couple of things. One, just to let everybody know what, you know, what we’ll be doing and tracking it. But the other is that a lot of the feedback we’re getting will make its way into the implementation plan as opposed to the strategic plan per se. So, if you give a suggestion that is weedy, you know, it’s granular, it’s focused on your particular unit or a particular program, that’s much more likely to show up in the implementation plan than in the strategic plan. It’s per se. Does that make sense? So, don’t think that if you don’t see a revision to the strategic plan that your idea was necessarily lost. It just may have been too specific or granular to be in the strategic plan, but instead, part of the implementation plan. So, with that, I’ll stop. And we have the plan queued up in case we need to go to it, to discuss any parts of it. But I just think we should just have a discussion. And we have mic runners here, because this is being recorded, so we can capture any of the feedback. So, I would ask that if you have a thought, a suggestion, a comment, a question, that you signal, so that Ellen or others can run around the mics. So -- and I mean, I can go on and talk all day. So, if you want to hear me drone on, there’s no problem. We can do that. But I really thought it would be much more useful to have a conversation. So, don’t be shy. Who’s going to be first?
Just given what you just said about things, granular things, going into the implementation plan, is it still useful for us to suggest initiatives and things that we can envision supporting the strategic plan at this point? Or is -- will there be a later point for that kind of feedback?
So, if I understand the question right, are you saying those more granular initiatives, is now a good time to suggest them? Or should you wait? Now’s absolutely a good time to suggest them. So, what we’re doing is we’re gathering, when we get the feedback, we’re sort of breaking it into the two categories, things. Are relevant for the larger strategic plan?
We’re going to record that stuff, right? We’re going to separate it out into two categories. The stuff that might impact the strategic plan itself, and then all the other kind of initiatives. And so, by all means, send those now. However, that doesn’t mean this is the only time to do that. So, that’s going to be, like I said, an ongoing, evolving thing. So, it may be that we have an initial slate of initiatives under each goal, under each initiative, under each priority, right? But then, we’re going to have new ones that come along that will support one of the priorities somewhere, but we didn’t think of, or it didn’t present itself early on. So, there’ll be ample opportunities later, but don’t wait. Don’t sit on something. If you’ve got an idea, please, bring it on. Yeah.
Good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity.
Sure.
I’m Jen Van Dusen. I’m from COM. So, I’m glad we’re focusing on implementation, because the rest of it looks great. So, curious about how those strategic implementation steps will be vetted. So, I, you know, took the opportunity to ramble on electronically and submitted my comments to my dean. And I’m just wondering, how will those be vetted? Will they be by college, for example? Or, you know, what will be the internal steps that will happen?
Yeah. So, that’s a great question. I’ll give you my answer, and then I’m going to also ask Josh if he wants to chime in and elaborate. So, what we will do is we’re taking all of those great suggestions that we’re getting, right? And we’re seeing how well they map onto the strategic initiatives. And we’re prioritizing the ones that are -- that have the highest priority in terms of our core fundamental mission, which is student success. It’s the interest of the student. So, for example, if there’s something that would be a great thing to do for the betterment of humanity, but it doesn’t directly touch our students, it may be included as an implementation step, although less likely to be. But it may be included, but it would be a lower priority than something that’s going to directly impact our students. And we also look at things that are the level of achievability, if you will, like the low-hanging fruit, the things that we realistically can do. Because at the implementation level, it’s less about big, grand aspirational things and more about concretely, can we do this? And so, if it’s something that’s going to require a $5 million investment, and we don’t have $5 million to invest in that particular area, well, then, you know, we’ll park it. We won’t lose the idea. We have a mechanism in place to park it and say, “All right, we will think about this, but it’s not going to make it yet to the implementation level.” Now, in terms of those, the plan for the implementation level is to have committees of faculty, professional staff, that will focus on each of those priorities. So, let’s say priority number one, right? There’ll be a committee that will be focused on that and will be meeting regularly, probably monthly, and will be tracking progress on those action steps. And each action step will have a point person. That doesn’t mean that that point person has to do it all. But it’s that point person is the one in charge to making sure that we’re making progress on that action step. And then, those committees in turn will meet with the president, provost, CFO, once a quarter. So, quarterly, we’ll meet to say, “Okay, so how are we doing, you know, on each of these initiatives? We got a green light? We’re on track? We’re making progress? Yellow light? Not so much. We got, you know, a red light? We’re not even getting started on this. And in which case, let’s revisit it. Is it a question of funding? Is it a question it was unrealistic to begin with, et cetera? So, there’ll be wide input on implementation of it. In terms of which of the priorities that we use, at the end of the day, that’ll be a judgment. We’ll get lots of input on that, but it’ll be a judgment we have to make, because we can’t do everything. And strategic planning is as much about what you don’t focus on as it is about what you do focus on, right? Because we would love to do everything, but we can’t do everything at once. And so, we have to sharpen our focus and figure out what -- but the guiding principles of that will be, does it dovetail support our mission of student success? And is it achievable? You know, is it something we can realistically do? Do you want to elaborate?
Sure. Yeah. There’s also two levels to think about strategic planning. We’re working on the university strategic plan right now, but we’ve asked each college and frankly, each unit within the university to develop their own strategic plan on the heels of this. So, for COM, it will resonate with UNE plan, but it’s not going to be identical, because they have their own very specific college issues. And so, depending on what your suggestions might be, it might rise to the level of the UNE-wide plan, or it might be something that we think it’s a really good idea, but it really belongs in the COM strategic plan. And then, you would prioritize within your college how you would use resources to move that forward. Let me give you an example of something that’s college-specific but university-wide. So, let’s say Arts and Sciences proposes a new undergraduate major. And through that, we generate a new revenue stream. We have more students coming, we have more tuition. You might say, “Well, that’s a CAS-specific thing,” but really, it’s a university thing in the sense that we’re investing in a revenue stream that benefits everybody, and we develop a new set of students who want to come to UNE and go to that program. So, it can be both. It can be both a college-level implementation, but also rise to the level of saying, “Yeah, the university should absolutely invest in this, because it actually benefits all of us if we increase our enrollments and develop new programs that are exciting to our students.” So, that’ll be part of the sorting that we do, depending on what the suggestions are. And we’re actually getting a lot of both of those categories, frankly, from the feedback. Some of it is just general feedback, but as we look at it, we think, “Well, this belongs in a college plan,” or, “No, this actually rises to the level of a university-wide discussion.” Does that make sense? Yeah.
In the back?
My name is Lindsay Vasquez. I’m the Program Assistant of Graduate Programs in Public Health in the College of Graduate and Professional Studies. I have kind of a specific question about the fourth piece of the strategic plan, the building a UNE community that’s diverse along all dimensions of human difference. I just wondered if maybe you could go into more detail about what exactly all dimensions of human difference means to UNE? And I know it’ll probably be in the implementation plan, but I was wondering if you could maybe talk about how you’re going to recruit and retain and support people from all aspects of difference.
Yeah, that’s a great -- that’s a great question. Okay. Again, we could go on and on again about this, so I’ll just try to be as brief as possible. All dimensions of human difference. A lot of times, in these days, the word diversity is sort of code for racial and ethnic diversity, and sometimes gender diversity as well. But typically, more often than not, just racial and ethnic. And that, when I say code, I mean it’s just limited to that and nothing more. That’s very, very much part of the definition and what we want to do. But it goes beyond that, I would say, to include everything else, right? So, gender -- and in our case, interestingly, because we tend to be in so many of our programs, so heavily female-focused, the interesting thing is trying to recruit more men, say, on the undergraduate side, right? To have that balance. So, gender, ethnicity, sexual orientation and preference, race, these would all be dimensions of human difference. And finally, I would add to that, that something that some of you have heard me talk about before, but the importance of promoting ideological diversity. This does not mean, let me be very clear, that there’s some kind of ideological test, that we’re looking for people that, you know, register certain political party or something like that. But simply, the idea of inviting into our community and welcoming voices that are across the ideological spectrum on any given issue, so that we can engage with those ideas, right? So, that’s another part of human difference, I think, that’s important to think about. So, how are we going to -- but let’s just focus on, let’s just take ethnicity and race, for example. So, a couple of questions come up. Why do we want to do that? And then, how are we going to do that, right? And so, the fundamental why, I think it’s important, is tied to our mission of access. So, UNE has a long history of providing access. And I can talk about the various ways we do that, right? We don’t pride ourselves on how many people we can exclude from the party, but rather, how can we grow a bigger tent and welcome more people into the party? And that ties back to our history at both St. Francis and Westbrook. They both held that value, and it continues on in our current traditions. So, by providing access to more people and more people of various backgrounds, that’s a good thing to do, because it’s part of our mission, right? And some of those people are going to be people of color and people from other historically underrepresented groups. So, that’s the primary reason to do it. Now, a benefit of doing that is that we all benefit by having a more diverse community. But the reason I stress the order of access first and then diversity of community is that if you flip that, the way it’s often done, what you’re really doing is putting a huge burden on the people of color, in this case, since we’re just talking about that, the people of color to somehow serve as the diversity for the rest of our benefit. Do you know what I mean? And that’s really not fair to them, that they’re -- it’s almost, I mean, it almost has an exploitative connotation to it, which is really not what we’re trying to do, right? It’s not we’re just trying to bring in people of color so that they benefit us. We’re trying to bring in people of color and from other backgrounds, so that we’re maximizing our access that we provide to people to benefit from this very, very special education that we have to offer. And then, a benefit of that is that our community becomes more diverse, which is a positive thing for all of us. Does that make sense? So, how do we do that? Well, it’s tough. I mean, for one thing, you got to obey the law. We can’t break the law. And so, we can’t, there are certain things we can’t do in terms of using racial tests, for example, for employment situations. So, we got to be careful about that. But what you do is we, in a nutshell, we make it a priority, and we’re very intentional about it. So, if you’re a department head and you’re recruiting a faculty member, you make sure that you are doing everything you can to diversify the pipeline, to reach out to places that are likely to make phone calls and to place ads in the right places, and to go to conferences, and to signal that we are interested in applicants from a diverse background, right? And then, you try to recruit them, and then, if you get them here, you try to support them. And you support them through various means. And, you know, sometimes, if you’re the only person of color coming into a department where there’s no one else of color, it takes a very special person to be willing to be that pioneer. But if they can feel welcomed and supported, then it’s more likely they’re going to stay. And then, once we have a toehold there, it makes it easier than to recruit the next person, and then the next, and the next. So, I think if we just make it, if we -- rather than having like a little checklist that we sort of pro forma, like, “Yep, did that,” and if we really care about it, you make it a priority and you signal that it’s something important. And then, you support people and make them feel, you know, included. It’s as much about inclusivity as it is about just the actual recruitment process. Having said that, is it going to be easy? Absolutely not. It’s not going to be easy at all. I mean, we live in the whitest state in the country, you know? We just do. Look around this room. But we’re not going to make any progress if we don’t try. So, that would be my -- Mike, did I answer your question? Okay. Shelley?
So, just to add to that, one of the things, and this has to do with infrastructure, I think, as well, is absent from our campuses are people with disabilities, and especially mobility disabilities. And we recently had a, you know, with our showcase, it was crazy to be able to bring in someone who was in a wheelchair. And so, I hope that a welcoming community would also consider people who have mobility issues or visual issues, as my son says, handy-abled people, that we think about that. And we also think about people who are in recovery and the kinds of supports, again, that we can provide on our campuses for folks who are here, who are in recovery. So, that was one piece, and thank you for opening that question up. The other that came from our program, and this is a weave through everything that we did, was technology. And we really didn’t know where to put that. I mean, we put it everywhere, actually. But as we become really pushing the experiential nature of the work we do, the global nature of what we do, the inventiveness of what we do, we’re always bumping up against technology. So, I’m wondering where that fits in the overall strategic plan? That might be a question for you, but it’s an important question, because it’s frustrating to be inventive and then to have technology fail you.
Great question. First of all, on your first point, completely agree, absolutely agree that we’re -- and that’s what I mean by, you know, all dimensions of human difference, right? So, it’s just like kind of everything that you can imagine. But for the right reasons. And I think that, I just keep coming back to that, and I just want to stress that. It’s that we need to make sure that the people we’re welcoming into our community, we’re not just doing it because it makes us feel good, right? That we’re doing it for the right reason. To technology, absolutely. There’s a number of themes that sort of weave through the strategic plan, right? And some of them are reflected in those core values that we articulated at the beginning. But others are things that just sort of weave through the strategic plan, and technology is one of them. And we absolutely need to up our game in certain technological senses, and we’re always trying to do that. So, a couple of examples. The Global Classroom Initiative, where we have, you know, synchronous links with, you know, other places. That’s a wonderful initiative. And the cost of something like that has just dramatically dropped. That was looked at a couple of years ago, and it was deemed to be too expensive. And now, the costs have dropped to the point that it’s fine. It’s not too expensive. So, there’s an example. We’re looking at electronic medical records, trying to see, instead of having, and this is something that the provost has been very, very good at pushing, is trying to look across units and as much as possible coordinate the CMRs and, you know, other kinds of systems that, so that we’re all using the same product as much as possible. That gives us economies of scale in terms of cost, but also makes it easier to do cross-disciplinary work. And there’ll be exceptions where we can’t always do that. But we don’t need to have, you know, five different electronic medical record, you know, things going and different contracts and everything, if we can coordinate better together. I mean, I could go on and on about other examples of technological innovations. You know, a lot of it’s cost. We have to, we can’t do everything that we want to do. So, telemedicine is another area, whereas I see with our efforts in IPE continuing to grow and our rural health initiatives, that telemedicine should be a bigger and bigger part of that. Another piece of technology. The SIM Center, if you look at Dawn Marie and her team and the work that they’re doing over there, it’s fantastic. It’s amazing. But of course, every day, new, you know, higher and higher upgrades of robotics become available. I just read about one, just a couple of days ago, that is the newest mannequin, 50 grand a pop, just the base price. But it does all kinds of things. It like bleeds and cries and like, it is like unbelievably realistic. So, that would be very cool to have, right? But I don’t have like, you know, a couple of million bucks free to just go upgrade all the mannequins. But so, we are going to be looking at technology continuously. It’s an ongoing thing, and we just have to be judicious about where we spend our, where we invest our limited dollars. But as much as possible, trying to build common platforms. And back to CGPS, for example, trying to, in the effort to build better bridges between CGPS and the core other colleges, to, technology is one way we can do that, to the extent -- now, there may be exceptions, things that, you know, a product that they need that is unique to their needs, that doesn’t work for the rest of the university, that’s fine. But as much as possible, trying to use the same platform will help. So, yeah. It’s there. Haven’t forgotten about it.
Just a note to that, I think that comes under the nimble, the nimble part of the whole problem.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah. Although nimble would go beyond just technology to include other things. But yes, absolutely.
Thank you. This is Mac McCall, College of Pharmacy. I support the strategic priorities. I think those are the right direction. As a faculty member, I’m not inspired by the vision that was drafted for our new strategic plan. The first sentence reads, “UNE will be among the most experiential-driven institutions of higher education in the nation.” That just doesn’t inspire me to be the most experientially driven. And even if we were to achieve that, I don’t know that it really means anything in terms of where we stand with our stakeholders and where we stand with parents as a parent of a child in college. It wouldn’t speak to me either. So, I just challenge us to think more boldly in our vision and to rise further than that statement.
Okay, sure. Well, listen, please, send your suggestions, right? Including wordsmithing. I mean, feel free, send your suggestions. Let me just speak briefly about what the intent was behind that. Is that we, what we’re trying to say is we occupy a unique space at UNE. And let me just do this. Let me set the graduate and professional programs aside for just a moment. I’ll come back to that, because I think that everything I’m going to say actually applies to them as well. It’s just that most of those programs are already doing it. But let me just focus on the undergraduate side for a moment. We occupy a unique space in, with regard to our undergraduate programs. We’re not like Bowden, Bates, Colby on the one hand, we’re not like the Humane system on the other, right? We don’t shy away from saying that we are going to train students with skills that are going to allow them to get a job, with deep disciplinary skills that are focused, that are market-aligned and focused. If you go to elite liberal arts colleges, they don’t want to hear that, right? “No, no, we’re not doing that. Are you kidding? Get a job!” No. So, they, we don’t shy away from that. At the same time, we recognize that the world’s changing very fast. It’s not like the old days where you get trained in a certain field, and then, once a year, you get a few CE credits, and then, you’re good to go. You can just kind of upskill a little bit, but you’re, you know. These days, the graduates, our students, are going to have to reinvent themselves dramatically at multiple times throughout their life, right? Because the world’s changing that fast. So, if you look at the disruptive effects of automation and artificial intelligence, it’s just one example, it’s just, it’s changing things very, very rapidly. And so, their very job descriptions are going to have to change. So, they need to develop the habits of mind that are going to allow them to reinvent themselves. And so, and then finally, what we hear from employers, and this is nothing new, but we’ve been hearing forever, that they need basic social skills. They need to know how to communicate. They need to know how to, you know, not stare at their phone whenever they’re in a job interview, and to dress appropriately, and to show up at work on time, and all of those kinds of things that we take as common sense, but that a lot of students these days are missing. And sometimes, students from the most elite institutions are the ones that are missing those skills the most. So, if you focus on those three distinct skill sets, I would argue that many places are doing one, or they’re doing two of those. But pretty much no place is doing, intentionally doing all three and trying to put them together, you know, in a coordinated package, all three of those skill sets. So, essentially, that’s what we’re trying to do. Now, then, once you say, “If that’s what we’re trying to do,” the question becomes, “How do you do that?” Well, one of the ways you do that is you change the classroom experience to focus much more on active learning, as opposed to just sitting passively and soaking up the lectures. But a much more problem-based and active learning. And there’s great models for how to do that. But the other part of it is experiential learning writ large. And that means not just internships, although internships would be a big part of it, but field work, clinic work, civic engagement, the kinds of clinical practica and rotations that our clinical programs are already doing, right? All of that’s experiential training, and a lot of that’s where you learn those other skill sets. And so, if you think about it, you could map on those three broad skill sets, and then the different settings, the in the classroom and the out of the classroom, and then you want to do all that in a coordinated way. So, that’s what we’re trying to say. To do that and focus on experiential learning, it has to be done intentionally. It can’t just be like, “All right, you’re in the classroom Monday, Wednesday, Friday; you’re in the field, or the clinic, or the lab, or whatever, Tuesday, Thursday.” But there has to be an intentional linking of those things. And a lot of that linking, not all, but a lot of that is through the experiential exercises as well. So, that’s what it’s kind of trying to say. But see, it just took me five minutes to all that. And the challenge is putting all that into a sentence or two. So, if you have ideas, assuming that what I said resonated and makes sense, if you have ideas for how to better articulate that, please send them on. And if it didn’t make any sense, well, then, tell me that, too. And by the way, let me just get kind of reading faces here. Did that make sense? Did the way I was just articulating that, did that resonate? Does that make sense? Okay. And you see now, the professional programs, I think many of them are already doing that, right? I think, if you think about it, there’s probably ways that every single program could do it even better. But if you think about it, they’re already doing that. In the clinical programs, you know, in pharmacy, for example, your students are already out there, right? In the clinics, and they have, where they have to, you know, learn these kinds of skills and things. But even there, I bet you there are ways, if you kind of think, reflect on the intersection of those three skill sets, there may be ways of tweaking it to make it even more valuable and more distinctive. But I think if we But I think if we do this well, if we implement, if we articulate that vision well and do it well, it could, it could really put us on the map as a place that is distinctive. Because we're not going to be competing against the liberal arts colleges because they don't want anything to do with, you know, they're all about the habits of mind, but only the habits of mind, not about the practical stuff. A lot of other places are very focused on the practical stuff, but they're, to the point that they're neglecting the development of those liberal habits of mind. And we're trying to really intentionally do both of them.
I'm wondering, given what you just said, which was very helpful for me, and I agree, we can do a lot more in terms of what we used to call hands-on learning, you know, back in the day, learning by doing, which is not helpful if there is no reflection. And I'm wondering, will we need another tagline? I'm looking at our tagline right there.
That's a very interesting question. So we've had conversations about that. On the one hand, I think the tagline's cool, and I really like it, on the other hand...
It is a cool tagline, I agree.
Yeah, I like it, and it's unusual and it's different. On the other hand...
Half the battle.
We, we don't want to build the strategic plan around a tagline, because taglines come and go, right? No, and I say that intentionally because early on, one of the ideas was, let's, let's use the tagline, and then let's build the plan around the tagline. And it's like, wow, but you know, taglines come and go, and sometimes they, they get stale and you need a new tagline, sometimes they last a long time. I mean, how long has Nike been saying, just do it, right? I mean, that's a long time. But, but sometimes they, they get stale and you need a new tagline, and so I was hesitant, I think we can, for the time being, there's no plans to drop the tagline, but I think we should be open if, if the time comes that we feel like it's getting stale and it's no longer as representative of what we're doing, and there's an alternative, and that's fine too.
So maybe it's just another lens to look at in the implementation of how do we, how do we exemplify that within each one of those priorities?
Yeah, well, you raise a good point, that's something I'll just kind of throw out there. One of the things that we're talking about for, talking about a couple of things, one is, the plan that you all have seen includes, I think we included the draft letter from the President, and then an introductory statement, and then the core values, and before you get to the actual plan. One of the things we're thinking about, and I'd be curious if your suggestions here, but is, taking the letter from the President, that message from, just taking that out altogether, right? And that can be like an insert, or an email, or something like that, that, something along those lines that we send out. And then having the introduction be a little more focused around the theme of a broadened conception of health, that, because the theme of health is something that is kind of unique to us, but not just, we don't want to limit ourselves, and you've heard me say this before, that UNE is more than a health sciences university. It very much is a health sciences university, but we are also more than just that, right? And so if you think about it, we're all about health, health of individuals, but we're also about health of communities, health of societies, and ultimately, health of the planet, health of the whole world. So we might think about restructuring that introductory message, not, not the message, the introduction itself, kind of around that theme, that UNE is about this broadened sense of health, and that that kind of fits in, you know, everything kind of fits into that. So it's just a thought that I've been toying with and talking to Josh and a few others with, and if anybody has thoughts about that, I'd be, I'd be curious.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Michelle Colley, I work with graduate education programs here and in CAS, so I'm one of those boundary spanners. My question has to do with governance and what kind of processes will be put in place to provide incentives for the various units identified, particularly, I'm looking at number one, which is effective teaching, so that units can be compelled to and/or inspired to share resources and give some things up, which is required for true collaboration. When I looked at that list on number one and was in conversation with my department, we had that, that question. So what will happen governance-wise across the university, so that people aren't sort of holding out for their own interests and reluctant to do the kinds of collaboration that potentially lead to sharing resources and those kinds of things?
That's a really good question. And so, our time's up, we got to go. So, no, no. So here's what I'm going to do, I'm going to, I'm going to give you my answer, but then I'm going to ask Josh to elaborate as well on that one, because the deans all report directly to Josh, and so I think, you know, he can, he can help answer the question. So, first thing I would say, is I'm very proud and very happy that as a general rule, and there may be exceptions, but as a general rule, our faculty is, gets the idea, we don't have an entrenched faculty as, by and large, and if you haven't been to other places, you may not appreciate that as much, but in other places, you have faculties that it's like, we've been using this book and this syllabus and ever, for the past 300 years, and it was handed down on stone tablets, Mount Sinai, and it shall never change, you know, it's like there's this real reluctance to do anything differently. And I don't really see that in our faculty. Our faculty tend to be that nimbleness. I mean, sometimes I wish we could be even a little bit more nimble, but I would say overall, we are way more nimble than other places and, and open-minded. And I'll give you, and I think that's one point. The second point is, we need to do as much as possible, not through coercion, but through inspiration. So we want to lead by, by helping people get on board and understand that this is the right way to do things, and then hopefully, people will agree and, and do that, in a way that is always a win-win, so that if you're successful, if you give something up and you're successful, it's going to empower the, not only my, my partner here, but, but ultimately, it comes back to benefit me as well. The faculty in CAS have just recently actually made a move that is exactly along these lines, basically have signaled a flexibility, because one of the things that we need to do is make it easier to transfer amongst, between the colleges, right? That's something, and we've established ourself barriers in the past that have hindered that movement between colleges. We need to fix that, right? Well, before Josh and I could even get our, you know, figuring out how to try to convince people to suddenly, CAS on their own, act to actually begin fixing that problem. I mean, that's wonderful, that's that coming together and, and making those kinds of changes. So I think that a lot of it we can do by helping people, by inspiring, by helping people understand why working together and sometimes giving up a little something can be in your, in the long-term benefit of everybody, right? Having said that, might there be times that we have to mandate certain things and say, all right, look, you know, we got to do it like this, we're going to do that? Then, then we will. And neither of us have a problem, and the deans don't have a problem, with, you know, pulling that trigger when we need to. But, you know, we're going to reserve that, you know, hold that back and reserve and only use it when we absolutely have to, sort of mandates. It's much better to work in partnership. And so far, I've been very pleased with the way that our work with UFA, for example, has gone. When there have been concerns or issues, we sit down, we talk about it, and, I mean, there may be bumps in the road, but so far, it's gone really well. I'm really happy about this, I'm not too worried about that. And I think if people are inspired and they get the vision, everybody wants to do the right thing, right? We see that we're in a, in an incredibly competitive environment, and we want the university to be successful, and we're going to need to make, you know, we've got a strong foundation, but we're going to need to make some changes in the way we do things. And if people understand that, and there's trust, and they believe we're doing it for the right reasons, then I think people will come along. So, am I answering your question?
Governance? Yes.
Well...
And the governance piece, I think, is really important.
So, and again, I want to get Josh to elaborate, but, but help me understand what you mean by governance, governance in particular. Do you mean shared governance? Do you mean the way that, help me understand exactly?
Sure. So each, each unit in the institution, and I've worked at several colleges as well, has their own temperament, personality, and culture and way of doing things.
Yes.
And I agree with you, I spend quite a bit of time in CAS with that faculty, and I think there's some really innovative and creative folks there, as well as the rest of the units, and I think people will step up. And it is part of the leader's role to inspire, so I'm really appreciative to hear that back. The governance structure appears always to be static to people that are not in those roles specifically, like, you know, I come out of K-12, the school does X, Y, and Z. Well, no, the school doesn't. Human beings inside it do. But most of those of us that are in staff and faculty positions, I think, can remain sort of in a position of the they, you know, the governing group, or the president's, you know, college committee, or whatever it might be. So in terms of governance needing to be really transparent, it also needs to change and be nimble and flexible, and not keep some of the trappings of historic higher ed, because it, just by virtue of your titles, it carries those roles.
Okay, two quick points, and then I'm going to hand the mic to, to Josh, but, but two quick points on that. So the first is that one of the things that Josh and I both have talked a lot about is, and amongst the deans as well, is that we have to have better coordination, that the colleges do not exist as islands amongst themselves, but there needs to be much better coordination amongst the colleges. And I'm really happy to report that the deans, this new deans group that we have now, is, they've really come together, they're working together, they're actually meeting together, they're even having, they, on their own initiated a meeting together without any of us there, just the deans, right? So they're trying to work together, and they get the idea that there's got to be better coordination. And the faculty in CAS that acted on this proposal to make it easier to transfer amongst colleges is an example of, even at the faculty level, that, that kind of coordination happening. I think what I hear you saying is that sometimes what tends to happen, not just here but elsewhere, is that in terms of the official governance mechanism, like UFA in our case, that the, the same slate of like four or five people keep getting elected every time, and it becomes, after a while, some of the faculty can say, well, wait a minute, you know, there seems to be the same people getting elected, you know, Frank Daly, you know, he's just constantly like...
I think you're just going to call it the Frank Daly College.
Pretty soon it becomes the Frank Daly College, no, I'm just picking on Frank because I know he can take it. But if that's what you mean, then I think, two answers to that. One is, the faculty, you yourself, have to take the initiative to get new blood and, and change it around, not because those, those leaders that are stepping up to the plate and, and take, not because they're not doing a good job, or they're not great people, but because it's always good to have fresh ideas and fresh leadership rotating through, but that's really on you all to, to do. But the other thing I would say is that we're not, we are working with UFA, but we're not letting UFA be the only mechanism that faculty have to, to have input into things. So for example, there are committees that may include UFA members, or that may even be an UFA committee, but then there'll be additional faculty outside of the UFA system that are added to those committees. Do you follow me? And so that way, it, it provides an opportunity to, for, for other voices to be heard. So let me let Josh elaborate.
No, it's a great question, and all, all organizations struggle with this, but universities really struggle with this. On the one hand, if we were going to write a report, all the people in this room couldn't productively sit down and write a report together, it's just, it would be unwieldy, right? So one of the reasons we have, we break up into committees and have shared governance is to just have, have people bring drafts forward that others can reflect on in reasonable working groups, and that's very common, right? We have search committees that focus on candidates to bring in, we have task forces, we have UFA committees, there's a lot of different ways that we break up the work so people can focus on things. And then the key thing is to bring it back to the whole community, as we're doing the strategic plan, and make sure everybody has input on that. But it's always a challenge to be representative on the one hand, but to not be exclusive on the other. I've learned in my career, you cannot over-communicate. The biggest challenge is communicating effectively, making sure that President and I and others communicate to you, but that we also receive communication through a wide variety of resources, including, any of you can call me, email me, stop by my office, I really do want to hear from individuals, not just from, through UFA or committees, or, or the department chairs or others. You know, in terms of governance structure, though, and getting things done, one of the things I like about universities is they're not strictly hierarchical. Most people outside of higher ed don't quite get universities, because if they come from the government, or from the military, or from corporations that are highly hierarchical, they don't understand how flat our organization is, how everybody really should and tries to have a voice. That's a, that's a strength, but it's also a challenge in terms of moving things forward. I, I don't think it works to top-down things, and I don't like doing it, and I, I would rarely want to do that unless there was some federal edict that says, you know, we all must fill out this form or something. And what I found is that it's really unnecessary. What you do is, we do want to inspire, we want to promote good ideas, I'm certainly going to champion certain ideas like active learning, but I'm not going to make anybody do anything. So in a previous institution where I was dean, our faculty and staff collectively decided we were all in on active learning, we were going to convert the entire curriculum to active learning. Now, was every single staff and faculty on board? No. We had some holdouts, and we had some faculty who said to me, you can't make me. And I said, well, no, I can't, and I'm not even going to try. But it's sort of, my analogy would be sort of like with United Way. If United Way was running a campaign at UNE, they might say, our goal is 100% participation. And that's a very good aspirational goal, why would they say anything less than that? Are they going to make people give to the United Way? No. So I would say that if we were going to be all in on active learning, is that's an aspirational goal. What really happens on the ground is, you have what I call the coalition of the willing. There's, you know, a third to, as far as I can tell here, maybe 40 or 50% of the faculty are either already doing it, or extremely interested in adapting to active learning in their classroom. That's who we'll work with at first, and we'll highly incentivize them to do that, and we'll provide resources from my office, through SEDOL, through a variety of mechanisms to help support faculty to move in that direction. And what you find when you do that is, the, what I call the late adapters will look at that and say, gee, you know, they're all having so much fun, and they're going to these workshops, and their students are doing better, maybe I should jump in on that. And what you see over time is that the late adapters do join in on that, just of their own volition, because they see the whole university is moving in that direction. So, so the President will be talking about this, I'll be talking about it, deans and department chairs, you know, key leaders on certain issues like active learning or experiential learning, on the faculty are going to be champions for this, and we'll find that coalition of the willing, and we'll move in that direction, we'll highly incentivize people to do that, and, and over time, the university will move in that way. If we don't have both bottom-up and top-down leadership on that, things don't happen. But when you have those things together, universities can really move in really innovative ways together, and, and I think this is the place to do this, honestly. I agree with James, I've been a lot of places, I've never seen a faculty and professional staff as committed to working together and thinking together about how we might be innovative, and being willing to have those conversations than, than any place I've ever, ever been, honestly. So I really think we can do this. I think the, the plan will inspire us and that we can move this university forward exactly as the plan outlines.
Thanks, Josh.
Turn for you, turn for those coalition of the willing, I call them gourmets, I'm the gourmets. Yours is probably more of the gourmets.
Hi, Erin Hartigan from physical therapy. So this is just more of a comment. I'm really liking what I'm hearing because I think that it's the infrastructure and the resources is what we need, because I think the people that are trying to get into governance, trying to be champions of experiential learning and technological advances for teaching, we're running into barriers, and it already seems like you're understanding the nimbleness of changing the calendars, giving us protected time to meet so that we can learn from the champions, we can be active in our governance. I think right now, it's hard because of the busy nature of the, what we're doing, and then, it's already been mentioned, the barriers, the, the technological barriers, the, the physical space barriers to try to do experiential learning. So I think that we're really resonating with this plan. It's going to happen quickly, like, it's almost 2019, so my suggestion would be, I love this plan, but to give us the resources so that we can start to be nimble immediately instead of, okay, now create and do these things and figure out how, because I think we've already been, been trying to do these things from my perspective.
So, great, great point. Couple of things. First of all, you're right, that a lot of what you see in the plan, there are many things that are going on around the university that are already, that dovetail perfectly with, with things that are already in the plan, right? So it's not as though this is all brand-new stuff that no one's doing any of this, in fact, we're doing a lot of this already. This just sort of, you know, focuses us in and provides some structure around it. So that's a good point. In terms of resources, there will, we will find, and we will earmark, some new resources for investments. We have to, right? At the same time, keep in mind that there's, I promise you, there is no big pot of money sitting somewhere in, or if it is, maybe Josh has it somewhere in his office, but I don't know where, but there's, it's not as though we're sitting on this huge pot of money. We, all of us together, we have a certain amount of resources. What we need to do is to figure out how to optimize the use of those resources. We need to find out, exactly, reallocate, that's exactly right. We have to find a way to reallocate and say, okay... We have to find a way to reallocate and say, "Okay, we've been doing this in, in this way for a certain period of time, and it's okay, it's doing okay, but we're really not optimizing our resources. So we need to stop doing this and reinvest those resources over here." Or we need to look at, you know, certain policies, we need to look, we just need to look across the whole board and try to find ways of reallocating resources to create the resources that we need to, to move forward. So it's not just all a matter of new investment. It's a matter of, of taking a hard look at what we're doing, deciding how to reallocate resources, the existing resources, to, to be able to, to invest in these new initiatives. Absolutely. And so we all need to be, take a fresh look and at, at not only resource allocation, but even things like traditions and things like, to ask ourselves, is that really, is it creating a barrier now? Might it have been a good idea at some point in the past, but no longer is, and we can rethink that now, right? So, and, and that, that's happening. We're doing that at the kind of highest level, but then, right on, you know, boots on the ground and individual programs and individual labs and that sort of thing, there may be barriers that we need to rethink. And just because we've all, the one nice thing about UNE is, just because we've always done it a certain way, doesn't mean that we can't change, right? We actually can change here. There are a lot of places where you can't. So, all right, I am being told that we are about out of time. Are we out of time? We have room for one more comment?
One more?
One more, okay. Oh, in the back.
This goes really well with the idea of resource allocation. So in the draft of the plan, it talks about associating metrics to each of the goals, which is great. There's no point in doing this if there's no KPIs involved. In my experience, tracking metrics typically requires not only investment in some sort of technology to track those things, which we've talked briefly about from other questions, but also proper implementation and use of that technology, as well as some semblance of data integrity and data governance. So can you talk about your vision for tracking what ends up being identified as those right metrics for each goal? How you're gonna share that information? And then sort of continuous evaluation of those metrics that we initially set? So again, no reason in setting them if they can't be changed later on. Because that, you know, in order to make decisions like resource reallocation, there needs to be something to support that decision.
Excellent, excellent point. Okay. Really quickly, first of all, in terms of metrics, many of our goals, probably not all of our goals, but many of the higher-level goals, there are metrics and they're kind of obvious what they are, right? So, so take, let's say, for example, under, I think it's priority number two, the increased enrollments, progression, graduation, continuing education. So let's, let's look at retention, for example. So we want to improve retention in certain programs. Certain programs, it's not a problem, not an issue, doing great. But in other programs, we have issues with retention. So how do we measure retention? Well, it's pretty straightforward, you know? So you've got the first to second year retention, first to third year, you know, et cetera. So those become our KPIs. And we look at those KPIs on a regular basis, we track them, and that's kind of, are we meeting that goal? Now, to achieve the goal of retention, what do we have to do? Well, we got a whole bunch of action steps. So we gotta up our game in advising, for example. So let's just take that. Now it's drilled down to advising. So if we're gonna do better advising, what does that look like? Well, it might mean that we need to implement these, you know, very specific kinds of concrete things. And each one of those then become very concrete action plans with a deliverable date and then with certain metrics that we track them. Those metrics are gonna be different for every one of those action steps. So some of them, like I said, with the high-level retention, it's, it's just a, you know, percent change in retention. It's pretty straightforward. But then the, the, you're gonna have a multitude of things that, that feed into that retention goal. Each of those have, are gonna have their own individual metrics that are associated with them. So the technology for doing that, as a matter of fact, Josh and I just met earlier today about exactly that question. And we haven't chosen a platform. It doesn't actually have to be super high-tech. I mean, you could imagine something like a glorified Excel sheet that lists all the goals, you know, kind of, and then lists the action items within each one that are, and then each one of those. The key is having a systematic way of tracking the information. Doesn't have to be super high-tech, but it has to be, you know, a way of tracking the information and then having committees that are looking at that regularly and tracking the progress and making sure we're on track. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I think also defining when we say information, that we're all calling it all the same thing. People that you've got the challenge that we deal with.
Okay. Not sure I understand, but, okay.